Which over August 11th to August 13th, please go home.
Oh, yes, it is.
Time to go home.
Yeah, we missed that one. It's August 13th, 2015. We're going to start with ordinance number 52, 2015, and it's the ordinance amending section 3750 of the Cod 5 Ordinance as related to the snowmobiles, off-highway motorcycles, and all purpose vehicles. I've had a chance to look this over, and I do know that I think I want to hold this at second, and the reason why too. On July 9th, Ms. Tully had a great suggestion that we have another work session after this was presented to us, and also another public hearing. So maybe we can do that at the next council meeting, have a public hearing, and maybe try to have a work session as Ms. Tully suggested.
The only thing we're seeing is a public hearing, a ten-day ceremony. So the next work session of the next council meeting, if that will work, then we're going to have a public hearing.
I appreciate we have a public hearing before. And if we look at the comments, or most of the comments in the public comments have been about this ordinance.
Right, and, you know, because I mean, I still want time to look at this. Like, I believe in, like, number three, one hour a day, you know, for me, I don't know.
They have three kids and one ATV. That's one hour. We're going to have to have an ATV per kid to get an hour each.
So I just want to hold this at second, if everybody's okay with it.
I'm okay with it. I did review it myself. It is a change. I think I have to compliment the committee on what they did. I think they did an outstanding job.
I just think anybody's concerned about what they did, if there is still questions.
Right.
I don't have a problem, as I indicated. I think we can move with caution, but I just want to say I appreciate what they did.
So does anybody want to have a work session like Ms. Tully suggested on this?
I don't think it's necessitated, considering the people that were most vocal and concerned about our part of the committee. I think more or less what we do out there on the floor would be more beneficial to discuss it out there, so everyone else is going on.
I think we need to get it out to the public, so they can see what the changes are, and then have the public hearing, so they can talk before the vote.
All right, so then we just have to work with Josephine as to what would be, probably the first council meeting in September?
Yep.
All right. Everybody cool with that?
Cool.
Okay, all right. So, and Ms. Tully, that was yours, ordinance number 52, 2015. Ordinance number 88, 2015, Ms. Hanekin, that is yours. That's an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an EMS billing service agreement with life force management. Are we going to second reading on this, or tell us?
I do not have a finished contract yet. There were some items that we had to work through, some language that we had to work through that our law department didn't like, and we've gone back and requested them to review these changes.
All right, so a second reading?
Yes.
Do a second. I'm hoping to have it back as fast as we can, actually, the next three of these.
Okay.
We're working through some of those changes.
So then, okay, then ordinance number 89, Nick will hold that at second as well, okay? And for the audience, it's an ordinance authorizing agreement with the Cost Recovery Corp., LLC, in order to provide billing and related services regarding motor vehicle accidents. Ordinance number 90, 2015, that would be me, and we will hold it also at a second reading. An ordinance authorizing the mayor into an agreement with the Ohio Attorney General for liquid debt collections, which pertains to what Ms. Tully is talking about. Okay, ordinance number 97, 2015, Mr. Eagle, you would take that one. That's an ordinance completely repealing existing ordinance, section 1171.19 of the Cod 5 Ordinance, donation boxes prohibited. I adapt a new ordinance, 1171.19, which regulates donation boxes and creates a permitting process. You guys comfortable with second? Third reading on this?
I'm good with third. Everybody else?
All right. Jan, you okay with that?
We have a workout, as I know somebody in certain houses, we now have the boxes in there, but it's low, that they become generators, or full, and things are on the ground in a blink of time. So I think we're going to have to, where they go all the days and weeks, or something, to try and get them to work with us to prevent that from happening again.
So there's some over there. Who's going to call? That's a problem. Who's going to report? And I would call them. So the problem is not the front box.
We're not discouraging donations, or, it's just, and some people are putting trash there too, and they were not obviously using it for what they're intended for.
These people should be checked on a regular basis, at least. If the building department, they see there's problems, should be checked.
Yeah, there's a complaint. It has regulations, and the one regulation talks about maintenance, as well as overflow. So I think we use it, because naturally, we look at all the way that we put them doing the locations. So we do, that's a few diligence, and maybe we should just want to add another section. Making sure that it's emptied on a five-week basis. I don't know how often you can empty them now.
They've got to realize that, I believe, my, they've got a couple years. They get to realize the longer they have there, they get an idea how long it'll be there. The problem comes, and you have people show up and throw old chairs, they're all solving, that's my answer. Looks like hell, but they don't even fit the box.
You could just easily put in here, because you have, out for many, you could easily put in here, just a paraplegic, a paraplegic.
It sounds about, that we ought to go a second then, to make any adjustments.
Be careful, because like you said, if someone throws a couch, who's responsible for that? Because obviously, they're not intended for that. Who's going to take care of it?
I mean, who's going to remove it?
I agree with that. But is that the question? Is it clear that that's your responsibility?
Yeah, I don't think there's clarity, that's what we have.
You could probably just check a lot of our, or paraplegic, the talks about what can be left there, and who's responsible to make sure it's emptied. When is it considered full?
Second reading is fine.
Yes. No, that's okay. Are we going to, we're going to keep it at second reading?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance number 99, 2015.
99 or 98?
99. Ordinance number 99, I will take that one. That's a course provided for seniors snow removal program for 2015, 2016 winter season. I want to hold this at first reading, and the reason why is I had a meeting with the auditors, and they made some suggestions on this, on this snow removal, and on trash with seniors, and I want to kind of finish up some things with the auditors, and then maybe, you know, get with the law department and make some suggestions.
Sounds good.
Add to this.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Okay, so I'm going to hold it at first.
We don't need to do this in the next. Okay, so if we address all these issues by the end of August, there's no issue? Okay.
The other thing is, we need section two, so the cost needs to be identified.
Right, the push, it's going to be the same price.
Well, how much will it go up?
99. Okay, all right. Okay, ordinance number 100, 2015, I'm going to give that to Nick. Okay, right down. Where do you go? Okay, Nick is going to take 100. That's an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor into a contract with, is it Perrin? Asphalt company to perform the emergency pavement repair work on North Free Raid Drive. I think we should get this to, I mean, I would like to do three readings on it. I think this needs to be repaired, and I, the... So, Nick. Do you have any, anything to say about the company, Perrin Asphalt?
And the price of this comes down to, some restructuring of the base?
Do you know when they're going to start?
Who's responsible for the inspections after, unless you guys?
Well, clearly, after this kind of mess.
Well, I'm wondering, because they're being as new as it is, you know, obviously you can't check the whole road and see if there's one spot that's not correct.
It's not properly inspected before?
Well, I mean, there's one small area, I mean, it's obviously.
Well, how big is this area that we're talking about, for the 83,000?
It was about 200 feet, I think.
That's a very significant.
Do we pull a form?
It's about 220.
Have we pulled a form to see what happened?
Shouldn't we do that?
Yes.
We can't go back on the contract at this point, though, can we?
But can we make sure that we're doing?
But if we don't have a form, and we're just putting back the same thing?
What about the form? Just tell you what's wrong, so when they repair, they're going to repair.
Disintegrated?
Yeah, this.
Yeah, that's expensive.
Correct. Well, let me just say that the two major endorsements here are stabilization, 12-inch, this area right here, this is the bottom line, stabilization, 12-inch, as per plan, right? That's 42. Yes, and the other, the other one, yes. When I'm looking at this, I think that when you say the stabilization of this, what did you say? Is, is going to be half of the, so there's something really wrong under there in the original part. Okay, we do need to do it, and I agree, we'd rather do this, because we can't afford to have that road screwed up like that.
I do have a question, since we're on roads, getting off topic here a little bit. Who, are they finished with the air lane up there on Skyland, the air lane in 2015? Okay, who inspects that? The work that they've done? All right, because all the residents up on Skyland are completely limited of how they finished coming into Skyland. It looks terrible, and if you go up there, I don't know who approved it, or whatever, but it's bad. Skyland, the residents, I hear it every day, that they want that looked at. Well, I'm just telling you. Well, you'd have to go check out the project. You have to go see how they, where they finished. Yeah, it looks, no, it looks really bad. They didn't even, they didn't even go and go in, like, blend right into Skyland. They just, if they left, a big mess. Go see it. You'd have to go see it for yourself. It's a mess.
Okay, well, let's, let's see what's going on, and have them deal with it.
Something's wrong with the contracts.
It's not like before, when it's two, nine years ago.
They didn't blend it right into the road going into Skyland, and nothing was disgusting.
They haven't, they haven't striped or finished all of the, that's right. Do you know why, I was expecting originally that that was going to be done by the end of June. I think that was the anticipation that you had provided us. Do you know why we're in the middle of August, and that is not now?
I could probably answer something. Diamonds is arranged, and you shut it one time.
Well, it's good then.
That's been a big hamper for anyone doing anything with roadway work. It's handled every project out there.
I just wondered, because I don't know further explanation.
Well, I don't know, 82 looks pretty good. I mean, they're working in the middle of the night. They look pretty good. I mean, I don't, I can't see that, they've been, they've been doing a real good job in the weather, so.
In July.
Yeah, I think it looks very nice. Ordinance number 101?
100, we're going for a reading.
We're going for a reading, yes, because I think you need to. If he's saying 30 days, and then 10 days for completion, we need to get this done. So, ordinance number 101, 2015, Sylvia, could you please take that? That's an ordinance appropriating fund transfer from general fund to 101, 321, 5365 for transfers to Capital 401 Fund for Road Repair and Stormwater Projects.
And that would be Nick?
Nick again. You might as well hang on in here.
Okay, let's, let's get what we're talking about here. The 49-7 is for the engineering contrast? Yes, correct. And the other 5,000 is for what? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. What do you want to say? Oh, the bid package. I see. All right. All right, got it. What are we doing with those three readings?
Well, I think we have to go through three readings.
Okay, and this is what number now? I'm sorry.
They need the money.
What number is this?
This is 101.
Who's doing it?
Sylvia. Is everybody okay with three readings?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 102, 2015, Dave, would you please take that? That's an ordinance appropriating fund transfer for general fund to service the department on 201, 3541, 5440, the vehicle repairs and entire fleet, repairs to the entire fleet.
Now, is this the situation to try to correct where the trucks are at this point, or is it something out there?
We talked about this yesterday. This was to put money in the account for future repairs that are coming up, because they've exhausted everything, it's been in the account.
Right, well, we are, we're dealing with trucks at this point, as we discussed yesterday, that are not prepared for winter, and this is not taken care of?
This is why I brought this up last night, so that you know that this is because it's just for the maintenance of the trucks as come along. This has not to do with anything to do with what the presentation was last night.
Well, I know it's not to buy new trucks. What I'm saying is, we talked last night specifically about, we need to get repairs done on existing trucks.
This is for the four trucks that are down, because we only have two to four, or hopefully more.
What I'm trying to clarify, so we're not about to answer, what I'm trying to clarify is, what it is that we're, we're going to have when we're done with this. We're going to have operating trucks that are now out of use.
Right, and we need a, we need a service director, so we can start asking these questions to.
Just ask me.
Okay, well, okay, then that's last.
And I said, yes.
Okay, well, then we have to have it.
Third reading.
By the way, while we're on that, yesterday we talked about trucks that were on the lot. Today, they did extensive research to see if there were any other trucks that are available, if any other trucks are going to be available. These three trucks that they talked about are it. So if they get purchased, or somebody buys them from under us, we will not have the truck distributed.
And we'll have to operate with the trucks we have, that's right.
Well, I think we need to make a motion to authorize the department to go out. Question is, one, two trucks, I think we probably need two trucks and a loader, which is about $500,000.
Well, that's going to be a question, unless we do a leasing plan or some kind.
Well, we could investigate with a motion stating that we can move forward to investigate our actions. So we could make a motion.
Yeah, well, yeah, it might be gone anyway.
They might be gone today, and we.
So what I think we need to do, we need to authorize them to enter into a contract, to, I think, well, first off, we all agree we need two trucks and a loader. So I think we need to authorize them to enter into a contract by two trucks, loader not to exceed, or, or come back with a lease agreement.
Right.
Because, you know, if they're sold, they're gone. So I'll make, if everybody's happy with that, I'll make that motion.
Is everybody happy with this? All right. So thank you, Don, for that. Ordinance number 103, Jan. That's, would you please take that, please? That's an ordinance appropriating the fund transfer from general fund to the account 101, 311, 5500 for various street light repairs by Ohio Edison. Jan, you want to talk about this?
The street lights that Ohio Edison, there's outstanding bills of $18,800. We have bills to pay Ohio Edison's lights. So, lights, Ohio Edison, and bills to pay. I don't know what else. We need to elaborate on that.
I thought Ohio Edison was the one who was supposed to prepare these things.
They, they prepared it, but that's not free. We paid the electric bill. We paid.
To have them prepare, that's different than the electric bill.
Yeah, but they paid the repairs.
So she's to pay the bill for the ones that are already done.
So everybody comfortable with three readings?
I'm, I'm really interested in the answer to the question. Are we responsible for paying for the repair of all of these? If we are, then, you know, we need to be obviously paying for these things, and having them, check them out, because we've had a number of streetlights that are out.
Right.
So why don't we hold it for a second reading?
First reading?
Yeah, put it for first reading. Who's going to do it?
Janice. Sylvia, ordinance number 104, 2015, could you please take that? That's an ordinance appropriating a fund transfer from general fund to administrative communications, computer maintenance and upgrades, and HR administrative training. I suppose, it seems like we pay a lot on those computers, so it seems like every time we, I don't know, I'm with Nick on this, like, computer, or.
Well, obviously, there's, you know, the HR administrative training, is that because we have a new HR person? In which case, that makes sense.
I can tell you from the computer conversation we had, we want to have an assessment. I think we ought to build it into next year's budget, because it can be in excess of $50,000.
Yeah, I agree, and I think that's right.
And our biggest problem with right now is our care for Windstream. And I receive complaints daily from businesses in regards to Windstream. We have problems with Windstream, not consistently, but just often enough. In other words, at our busy times, we can wait forever for response time. So Windstream is a problem, and we're looking for another carrier. And that might help keep some of this down, because we're constantly having problems with the computers, just not running like it should, and it goes back to Windstream.
Yeah, we need to have an assessment.
We have to, this is clear report.
We need to be wise to put them in next year's.
Yeah, that'll be built in, yes, I agree.
I think that, in all the companies, Sylvia, I work for, training is included in the program.
I understand. Apparently, we're not in that condition, from what is being said.
Training for what? Training for HR is not included in the program.
Let's, let's just realize, we have a new HR person, and I think it's reasonable that they receive some training, okay?
Well, not only that, but it's also set up.
Yes, and she has to have set up, and so, I understand.
Well, we have to, this is an email from Sharon regarding my disposal. She currently has a balance of $417,360. There, when she wrote this, she needed $16,000 for nine streetlights that needed, that needed repairs. They, she was requesting the money from the general fund to pay for this, for the service. This is not well recovered, repaired for the needed. There are three other lights, and this is why the additional money. One was 1500, it was a little over $1500, a little over $1600, and the other one was $2800. And that she, this is why she's asking for the money. So the initial amount on July 8th was for nine streetlights, and there's three other lights that they have. There's a balance of $417. She's got outstanding bills.
Well, it appears that the way that the arrangements are made, is that while they will do the maintenance on these various streetlights, we can only assume we're paying for that thing when, when there's a failure, if possible. Would that be fair?
Yes.
Okay.
Will that, like, someone, an MBA, took her and took the light off?
That depends on us catching them and getting their insurance.
She writes on here, there's industry always, people fall to board very high on no card.
On no card. Other words, bam, and they're gone.
On the, on the issue of, the other aspect of that computer, there appears to be, you know, I understand most of this, there are some website, server updates, server updates, server maintenance, website maintenance, et cetera, that kind of drive this almost $9,000. That's something we need to look at, and we are developing our plan next year, as to how that's supposed to work, okay? But for now, I think we need to.
So what do you want to do? You want to go through the readings?
Yes, 104.
That would be Sylvia, for the ordinance issue. Ordinance number 105, I will do that one. That is an ordinance appropriating a fund transfer from general fund to Northfield Macedonia Cemetery. Well, it's supposed to be the cemetery, right? The Macedonia Fund, 101, 312, 5360. So I will take that one, and I believe they need the money, because this is an assessment of.
This makes us hope, that's what we're here. It's based on the assessment of our facts, it's based on our contribution. The percentages have never changed, it's just the dollars that we're here changes based on this assessment.
2298, 97?
Yeah, it was an adjustment over what we had originally committed to.
I think the emails stayed, we were short. We'd say a lot more on 28. We didn't budget enough. But that's, sometimes you don't know, because until the assessment comes in, you don't know what it's going to be.
Well, they actually briefed us on this, which is why I'm surprised by it.
Dr. White's on it?
They briefed us on it, and Mr. Trump, and I grew, said, and. Yes, the previous gentleman was the one, was the one who briefed us. Mr. Priest has not, but I guess, you know, this is trivial, I'm not going to get into it. Other than to say, I'm surprised at how quickly we're adding additional money to this. But the amount of money is not enough to get us concerned.
And then Dave, you're going to, we're going to do three readings on it, and Dave, you are going to make the motion for the, for the trucks and the loader?
Yes.
Are we going to, I would like to see a lease option, at least see what, what is out there. How does that work?
Well, I think, I think we have to make sure they have authority to go. So if they want to lease the trucks, and come, come back with us, we can make a decision later, as long as they can lock them up. On the, on the, on the wheel loader, at $5,000 a month, is what you're asking me to do. That's $60,000 a year. You know, in three years, we'd have it paid off, and for God's sake, I think it would last longer than three. I don't think we should lease that. And as part of, so that, I would include that if everybody agrees.
I'll buy.
The other part of that is, on the motion for the, for the, for the replacing wheel loader 45, they were saying they need two loaders. Well, we can't afford two new loaders. It's got a $19,000 trade-in value, or maybe it was $17,000. Well, we can't afford two new loaders. It's got a nineteen thousand dollar trade-in value, or maybe it was seventeen thousand. This, this, as part of the motion, I propose that we not trade the wheel loader in. That way, they'll at least have two wheel loaders. Hopefully, they'll live by with two wheel loaders.
Well, they said they wanted to get rid of one and keep one, and then get another one.
No, they were talking both options. I just wanted, that's my motion, is that we don't trade in this wheel loader forty-five, if everybody's, can agree with that.
So if you take all the dollars and close us on, make the two trucks and the loader, and the other one, how much do we cover?
Well, they were saying about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty.
Hundred and seventy-five.
And then, yeah, so it'd probably be five twenty-five. So not to exceed five twenty-five, because we're not going to trade in the wheel.
Well, the thing that I, I think we need to do is make a preference for the leasing, because then we can spread that cost over time.
I don't have a problem with that. We're authorized, but don't you think council and the mayor should have some say as to whether or not we like the lease?
Sure, absolutely.
So that's what we're gonna say. Enter into a contract, the lease are by, as long as they lock it up, if they have to lock it up with a purchase, not to exceed five hundred and twenty-five thousand.
All right, then that's gonna blow a whole big hole in other.
Well, we're hoping not to, but I don't think we have a choice.
Well, I don't think we do either, and we can't have functioning trucks.
Right.
One of our problems, apparently, from this last night's discussion is.
And like I said, there is, there are so many, um, trucks out there that really need to go to dot gov and start getting rid of this stuff. And there'll be more money coming in too, um, for that, but they need to get rid of this stuff that they're not going to spend any more money on, because it's just sitting over there rusting.
Everybody, I think, agreed with that. It's just the shock of having brand-new trucks that aren't even functioning either.
You know, I, I had, um, talked to Bob, I took him lunch, and I went over a lot of equipment with Bob. Um, I wanted to meet with him, and I wanted him to come to council, and I wanted us to have this, that work session that we did, which, by the way, thank you so much for that, um, because it's well-needed, and if you go out there, uh, if you go to these service departments and you see the equipment and see what's really going on out there, all the stuff that's just sitting around, we can unload a lot of this stuff and start getting it, cleaning it up a little bit, and getting it out of here. Um, it's, it's, there's no sense in keeping poor money into it. And, uh, you know, even Bob had, when, uh, I had lunch with him, he had even suggested that maybe one day when, um, all council can get together just to go there during the day and let them take you around and show you, and so, you know, so you have more of a visual as to what is going on.
I have a complete visual because he, I did see it because, uh.
The building needs to leaky?
Oh, absolutely. I went through a whole series of briefings, starting with Donovan, Jen Schuman, and going down into more detail with some of the other folks. So I got the picture. The only question that I have, honestly, Rita, is it appears that our, our maintenance routines on these trucks are not keeping them in, in service, and that's a concern we need to be dealing with.
The other thing they said they were going to talk about, part of the issue, as we talked yesterday, is the buildings don't enable it. And Bob and I have talked about what, what is the best building, that's why we talked about the fact you get someone to go out and look at the buildings, can you salvage, what do you do? But our, our critical issue is exactly what Dave's talking about. We've got to get trucks right now, or we'll be sitting here in December.
Yes, well, we have.
We'll be sitting here helping with the first snow, and we'll be able to plow.
It's a level of service that we need to maintain, and unfortunately, this has gone too far, but going forward with the plan that we have now, I think we need to incorporate that. You know, every three years, we can pretty much anticipate we're gonna need a truck, so we can start building that in.
Yes, I agree.
So that we're not getting into a situation where, boom, a half million bucks, and we're, we're sort of scratching our heads.
Right, I know. I, I absolutely, the reason for that capital plan is exactly that issue. At any rate, I have one other item, Rita, and I don't want to.
We have one more thing.
And we do?
There's another motion.
Yeah.
Look at the agenda.
I didn't, I didn't.
It's on the one she lives out for you. I think he just won your permit.
It's on the agenda, but for some matter.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that, I'm sorry. I didn't get that. Maybe it's right here, sorry about that. Thanks, Steve. It says. A motion authorizing the mayor approval of a merit increase for the fire chief, prescribing ordinance one one seven, that's what you, is this, what are you talking with, you know?
Well, the chief has, um, his published vote for one.
Okay.
He's been graded, uh, very highly approached, and, uh, it's time for him to get a raise. And last year, we passed legislation that said I had to ask permission, so that's his, uh, goal.
I think in the future, uh, we need to trust these executive session before you put them on, on the, uh, agenda.
Uh, that would be, that was why we wanted to do with the motions that are going into a deal.
Well, but, but you're, you know, you're basically saying, oh, I'm gonna do this, but the council won't. So I'm saying, in the future, you should, we should have an executive session, discuss these things before they're brought to council and may put on the public agenda.
We, we, uh, we're just trying to follow.
I understand. I'm just telling you in the future, but, so let's hear about this one now, tonight. What are the details?
The, the details are all sound to exactly what's in the ordinance, which is two percent of the four, and the figure is ninety-two cents.
When was the last time he got an admiral raise?
I'm sorry, effective what?
Effective.
Now, just check the, the, that what you just had, handed to you.
Yes, I just, so you look at as, right.
Yeah, I need to look that up one more time, thank you.
So it's two percent effective next pay?
As soon as you, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, so it's not retroactive?
Because he's eligible, he got his grade and done, and now it's just a matter of, he would've got the raise except for he stopped.
May I just, not retroactive, it's future, okay, because I've been on boards where we retroactive, so.
Yes.
So I'm sure I understand what date, so it'd be with the next pay period?
Well, it could be retroactive to his anniversary date. I'm not quite sure the exact anniversary date, because you have to be here, on your anniversary date is when you're eligible, then you have to be graded, so there's some time lost there. So his anniversary date could possibly be back a couple of.
Does the ordinance specifically state the parameters? It says two percent, but does it specifically state the time?
Um, it, it follows our other ordinances which stated how we are to give merit raises, this, yeah.
It's on anniversary?
On the anniversary.
Okay.
I was just gonna pull the ordinance up. Thank you for just being.
So we're basically going from about a hundred and five thousand to a hundred and six thousand or something?
Ninety-two cents an hour.
How much?
Ninety-two cents an hour.
About two percent.
It's about nineteen hundred.
If you give you ninety cents, you could be back.
Yes, that would be what I calculate.
Sylvia, would you like to take that motion?
Sure.
I'm wondering where my stuff was, and I haven't, I haven't had anything. All right.
Now, I did have another issue that I wanted to.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sylvia.
It's okay, I, I just held back because, or so we have to deal with this other one. Uh, I have been, um, contacted by the architect for the Manor House group. Uh, we are, they are currently preparing, uh, an appeal to the Ohio Board of Building Appeals to be able to, uh, receive an authorization for an occupancy of the Manor House, uh, forty-nine or less. And, uh, I, I did subsequently, because Mr. Ladd had asked that we do that, Mr. Piaszeki called me, I called him, he called me, and we discussed the situation. Mr. Piaszeki had some comments that he sent, and I called this afternoon to Mr. Feig, and I asked him to talk to Mr. Smith. I do believe that what they're asking for is reasonable. They're asking for the council to endorse the appeal that's going to the Board of Building Appeals. But I want to make sure that we don't, um, have a disagreement between the building department and the architect for the Manor House Society, that we're all on the same page, so, uh, if we can basically talk that through in some way here, uh.
Who was this, Derek?
Uh, Mr. Piaszeki.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, you know, I did have a chance to, I had a chance to, to look at the, look at the material that you sent. Uh, the, you know, I hope, the only question I had is whether we can get a more precise sense of how much these additional considerations that you're asking for would cost. We had kind of a pretty wide range in that suggestion area. Is there any way to refine that, uh, quickly here?
I believe that, uh, Mr. Feig and Mr. Smith had on through an exercise where they did seek is or estimates for a lot of the board.
Okay.
Um, the suggestions that are there had come up in discussions with them, it's nothing new to them, we've, we've discussed it in meetings many times, and, you know, they had expressed concerns that it just costs too much and things of that nature. It did sound as though they had estimates, although I'm sorry, I'm not pretty.
Okay.
You, so, the email, if I could interject, because we just got this email reception, and so I'm not sure who else was right beside you, Sylvia. I, you know, I opened it up not even knowing I had this email, and what worries me, if moving forward with any occupancy, is I just go right to your scores. Uh, fire safety, egress access, and general safety, and are those proposals going to put us in a level where it's acceptable? Because I'm not going to do anything that endangers people who want to be in that home. I, there's no sprinkler system. It's a public building. How do we get away from not having a sprinkler system in a public building?
Sure.
And, and those are the questions, you know, that before you open it up to the public, and have meetings or parties or anything in there, we have a responsibility, whoever's going to be in there, for safety, because we're liable.
Well, when do they have to go down to the promises?
Well, tomorrow, tomorrow night, they haven't, um, requested the hearing yet. Um, they usually schedule about a month out when they have it. I think the next hearing is September tenth, somewhere in that range. Uh, so we're probably getting really close to the point where they have to be on the schedule, so. A September hearing would be possible, and October one would be possible.
So, is, is, you're gonna accept their, what, if you're, you're okay with their proposal for the three eight, from what I understand, right?
They're, uh, I have no concern that they have legal right to appeal. Um, I cannot, um, provide an endorsement of that. Um, it is a legal administrative hearing, and it would actually be, I believe, Lama Vander Starwell Society versus Gerald Piaszeki. Um, as a building official, I might personally hold a warrant of certification from the state, so it's technically a suit against me.
Okay.
So I can't, I can't have an abortion for it.
Right.
Um, I, I do want to make sure I address that question. You, you did mention, I did bring some copies, if anybody would like, of the, of the content that was sent to Sylvia, to create.
Well, can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
The issue on the table was what? The Manor House community wants occupancy for their, for their houses, was, is that the issue?
Well, I guess, my understanding of it would be that they're requesting to have an occupancy of the building with very limited modifications to what's there, and when I, when I looked at the analysis that was submitted, I guess I'll try to give you a little background. The building code has thirty-four chapters in it, okay? They deal with everything from structure to fire safety to accessibility, and other, and other types of things. Chapter thirty-four, the last chapter, is entitled existing buildings, and it basically identifies that, okay, chapter one through thirty-three is what you need to comply with. If you're gonna go to a greenfield today, build a foundation and build a greenfield, right? If you're gonna do anything that changes in any way what you're doing inside of an existing building, or if you're gonna go make repairs or modifications to an existing building, you kind of flip it backwards. You begin at chapter thirty-four, and it provides guidance for you on which of the other places are applicable. It basically gives you a break because you have an existing structure already. So there's an approach in there that tries to identify the things you would need to do, and, and the applicant looked at it and decided it could not be the extent of repair that was required. So the very final section in that chapter is called compliance alternatives, and it's actually, um, been, been used very widely across the country. And what it does is it evaluates safety parameters in a building, existing building. It looks at nineteen things, like means of egress, exiting a building, uh, how big the building is, the type of construction, is it combustible construction or non-combustible? How tall it is, how easy of access it is, are there fire alarms, you know, things like this. How quickly can spread, uh, smoke spread from the building? There's nineteen things that they do, and they assign points for each one of those, and when it comes down to it in the end, I'm referring to the table at the top of page two. You need to have minimum safety score, and I forget the numbers, it's like thirty-four, twenty-four, something like that. So when you have all these points that you've been assigned, you need to be at or above that number, and if it is, then it basically lets the local building official, in this case, me, provide approval and say, you know, it's safe to occupy that lot. If you're anything less than that, then you're considered not being compliant with it, and in this case, you can see the numbers are quite low, they're, they're negative. Um, so you really don't even come close to be con, be considered safe by the building. The nice thing about this approach is that you can kind of customize your solution. So, for example, what I, what went on to describe was, when I looked at the points that were assigned, the really, the areas where they did really poor, that accounts for the majority of their, their point loss, are in three areas. One is called compartmentation, and so that's how well-built is the building to resist spread of fire? Will it be contained in a small area, or will it just run right through the home? Uh, and there were some things that could be done, in my mind, um, to improve that score and give you some more points, essentially get you closer to that minimum number you need. The second of the three areas was vertical opening, and that's how, how easily will smoke and heat move vertically through the building? And in this case, there had been a whole lot to, to stop. So there's some things that could be done there to make improvements and give you more points, essentially get you closer to that minimum number you need. And then the third thing was an automatic sprinkler system, and that actually gained you the most points. Now, I will say that if you did things in all three of those areas, you still actually weren't compliant. But I will say that you're much, much closer to it. So my concern from, if I were the applicant, let's say, I would be concerned that it would be appeals or with such low overs indicating that you're so far away from this minimum safety set, and that there are some things that you can do that you're not proposing to do. And so, you know, it would beg the question to me, and why aren't you proposing to do these things? Wouldn't you want to do any piece you could? You know, if it's something that's, you know, six million dollars to do, it's obviously quite prohibitive. If it's something that's technically not feasible, it's obviously quite prohibitive. And there are situations that where that would approach. Um, but I think there are a number of things that could probably still be done, in my opinion, that could improve safety in the building. And so those are things I would, I would recommend you consider. Um, now, from, from my standpoint, you know, council, mayor, city, people, they all weigh in and have an opinion, absolutely, on, on whether or not appeals board should approve or oppose. Uh, it does not matter. The appeals board is made up of, I recall, a lawyer, an architect, a professional engineer, a tradesman, a pipe fitter, and a firefighter. And so they have sort of the multidisciplined panel. Um, and oftentimes, we have projects from our, our city, and that's one, uh, oftentimes, they are not concerned about the cost, um, and they really look critically at things that are technically expensive. So my experience going to these things would, would, would tell me that, I don't know that the polls that I have will be successful. It might, um, uh, it could be successful or not, yeah. So I'm gonna basically present the case of history of what we looked at, um, how the points came out, and it represents a code compliance standpoint that's on the calendar. Uh, and then normally, um, they'll make a formal decision at the appeals hearing, make a recommendation that it's approved or not. It could be approved conditionally, but they add some stipulations to it, um, and then, uh, it becomes, uh, formalized after that, I'm sure. I'm sorry, I may have.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, since you and I did talk on the phone, I, I know exactly what you're talking about here. The issues that I see are that we can't have a divided view of this as we go into such an appeals hearing, so my thought is. view of this as we go into such an appeals hearing, so my thought is that I, I don't think there's been a, you know, we need to do this, we need to do that, that would get us all together on the same page, so I'm gonna recommend this, that the architect, you, and whoever else you think is important to do, evaluate these strategies, and I will ask them to come up with a number on each of these areas, obviously, the automatic sprinkler system is the one that is the most able to increase the fire resistance of the building.
Yeah, I mean, if you're asking what one thing would be good.
Yes, and if we're looking at this, you're saying it would, it was too costly and invasive to have just a standard sprinkler system like you'd put in a modern building, but there are other structures and designs that could be used, and I, I personally think that we need to at least have had one more discussion, so that the council can at least make their a decision as a group, after we've had that discussion, if we can be together on the points that you're describing.
Yeah, I just have to write down, look in my pen, I look, I couldn't support one for the appeals, because I need some facts that show, what is it that you're going to be doing, what is the plan, I'm in negative numbers, now, three.
So we have to work this, and then after the bigger report?
Yes, I think we have to.
And what they're going to do, is there a way, if they say, okay, we're only gonna use the first floor, we're never gonna use the second, because there is no handicap accessibility to the second and third floors, it's very steep, and very narrow, very short stuff, does that assist in the point value?
It could, but in a very limited sense, I don't think it would need you or you need me, a lot of what's evaluated is fire safety, so it would help on exit, because now you don't have a condition where people are on another level, need to use stairs, and are further from the exit discharge, getting them outside.
Do you also didn't look at handicap accessible, because I know when the bathroom was built originally, it had to be built, the extra bathroom, that was the one, had to be the handicap accessible standards, it could not just be, I mean, it's a bathroom, so the occupancy is given, does this also look at the fact that we upstairs is not handicap accessible?
It doesn't, it, this doesn't address that specifically, but I can address that, chapter thirty-four does address historic building, and one of the things that specifically addresses it is handicap accessibility, and you can really read it, there's a lot of conditions, but what it comes down to is it says, hey, look, you have an existing building, it's multi-story, unless there is, what's called a primary, the bathroom facilities, drinking water, something like that, is inaccessible, you don't need to make any of those secondary choices, so basically it would say, you don't need to do anything that you're.
So if you would not, you wouldn't have been access to the first floor, because you have, Egress access to the second floor.
Yeah, that, that would be an option, and it would help your, your score, so you address that, that middle evaluation might improve your, from a fire station standpoint, fire doesn't care if there's people there, you know, it will spread just as rapidly, with or without people on a non-for, so your fire safety value was worth something.
And I'm interested in what's the previous committee, this is what I see the most, the committees have done, very hard on making sure that those bathrooms, that, and who couldn't get in from this big, big corner, must've met that, so.
Yeah, if we were here today without that being there, it would be an issue, and it would be documented, my, my concern for compliance, but since it is there, it's not.
Thank you. Well, then I would recommend that we do have a session specifically dealing with this, after there's been a meeting and a discussion, and a joint effort to look at this in detail, and I would like that to happen as soon as it can, as I like. Well, see, that's why I say we have, there's no point in going to a building appeal if the purchase is unacceptable, you know, they, but as a practical mayor, you're not gonna support an appeal with purchases, everybody's gonna burn up on the building or something, so.
We don't need to.
Yes, we do, that's my point, and we're supporting this, this is a national story home, and we need to just understand what we're doing and move ahead with it, but we need to have the on the same page.
A lot of this is, you're suffering a lot of it based on, and we made that up, what are they doing with this building for, a lot of this is a way based on these things. It's clear, you're, you're just, this door of the house, we're guided to, a lot of this should go away, it's a crazy job.
We need to, we need to make sure that we can, those are the main things that I'm thinking about, okay, right, I, that's what I, I.